All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the budget hearing, an annual school district meeting. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we move into Administrator's Report on the Agenda Posting and Legal Publication of the Meeting.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email to town of Three Lakes, town of Monaco, town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, and WXPR Radio. And media notified by mail was WACD and WATK Radio. And just as an extra, we published within our designated newspaper our budget information.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next we move to elect meeting chairperson and setting ground rules for the meeting. As a reminder to everyone, as this is the annual meeting and budget meeting, any qualified elector can act as chairperson of this meeting. That being said, I will now open nominations from the floor for chairperson of the meeting. So, because this meeting is different, right? Not a normal board meeting. All qualified electors, meaning everyone in the audience as well, can provide a nomination. All of you that are seated in the meeting also have a vote for everything that's on the agenda as qualified electors. I will cover the ground rules verbatim as well. But just because I am the school board president does not mean that I have to be the chairperson of this meeting. It's all our responsibility as being present to nominate a chairperson for the meeting.
I'll nominate Alicia Williams.
I'll say that.
Okay. Justin, I will accept, thank you. Any other nominations from the floor for chairperson? Hearing none. I will move to close. The nominations from the floor. At this time, I will still need a motion to elect for chairperson.
I would like to make motion to elect Alicia Williams as the chairperson.
Do we have a second from the floor?
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Terry, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, sounding nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. I will move with ground rules for the remainder of the meeting. I'm gonna read these verbatim so everyone is aware. The board clerk, Josh Crowell, will act as parliamentarian for the meeting. Persons addressing the chair should rise if able and state their name and place of residence. Motions about items not on the agenda that fall within the powers of the annual meeting should be made under other new business. In accordance with Wisconsin Statute 120.10, such motions are limited to the following: buildings sites, tax for sites, buildings and maintenance, tax for transportation vehicles, tax for debts, school debt service fund, school capitalization fund, tax for recreation authority, textbooks, school lunches, and consolidation of high schools. All motions should be written, signed, and presented to the chair prior to action being taken. In the interest of time, comment should generally be limited to no more than two minutes. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of times a person may speak to a particular issue. Voting may be conducted by voice vote, a show of hands, or a ballot as deemed appropriate by the chair. Should an elector request a division of the House on a vote, the chair may honor their request. All proceedings will be in general accordance with Roberts Rules of Order as determined by the parliamentarian. Lastly, every elector in the district here at the meeting is eligible to vote. A qualified elector is defined in Wisconsin Statute 6.02, a U.S. citizen 18 years of age or older who has resided in the election district for at least 28 consecutive days before an election at which they offer to vote and who is not disqualified by virtue of one or more of the impediments described in Wisconsin Statute 6.03. Any questions? Hearing none. Next, we move to clerk to read the minutes of last year's budget hearing, an annual meeting held on October 16, 2024.
All right. Minutes. President Williams called the October 16, 2024 school board budget hearing, an annual meeting, to order at 6:00 PM. Led the members in the Pledge of Allegiance to the following were in attendance: Alicia Williams, board president; Stacy Klein, board vice president; Josh Crowell, board clerk; Mitch Ellis, board treasurer; Michelle Muleyne, board member. Others present: Terry Maney, district administrator; Steve Krasinski; Justin Zeus Toddrea. Principals: Jennifer West, communications coordinator; Nikki Maney; and two visitors. Administrator's Report on the Agenda Posting. Maney reported on the Agenda Posting and Publication of the Meeting. Elect chairperson and set ground rules. Motion by Crowell to nominate Williams as chair of the annual meeting. There were no other nominations. Williams accepted the nomination. Motion, Klein, Muleyne, to elect Williams as chair of the annual meeting. All ayes, motion carried. Williams reviewed the meeting ground rules as provided. Williams appointed Crowell as parliamentarian. Clerk to read minutes. Crowell read the minutes of last year's budget hearing, an annual meeting held on October 25, 2023. Motion by Muleyne Ellis to accept the minutes is read. All ayes, motion carried. District-related positive happenings for 2023-2024. Jen West, Jen West Communications Coordinator, shared a video of district-related positive happenings for 2023-2024. Treasurer's Report. Klein hands reviewed the unaudited treasurer's report. Motion made by Klein, Muleyne, to accept the treasurer's report for 7123 through 63024 as presented. All ayes, motion carried. Clerk's Report. Klein hands reviewed the unaudited clerk's report for 7123 through 63024. Klein hands explained that his report has similar information to the treasurer's report, but Fund 10 information is broken down into more detail. Motion made by Ellis and Justin Zeus to accept the clerk's report as presented. All ayes, motion carried. Budget presentation by district administrator and school business manager. Klein hands reviewed the budget report for the 2024-2025 school year. The district's 2024-2025 tax levy is $10,214,391, which is an increase of 1.06% compared to 2023-2024. The proposed mill rate for 2024-2025 is $3.98 compared to $4.60 last year, resulting in a 62 cent, approximately 17% decrease in the district's equalized valuation. Klein hands reviewed. Review of budget information included overviews regarding Fund 10, Fund 27, and Fund 50 revenues and expenditures, open enrollment, special education and enrollment and participation in the free and reduced lunch program. Resolution to adopt budget. Motion made by Justin Zeus, Jennifer West, to adopt the 2024-2025 school year district proposed budget as presented, including $350,000 for community service operations, including recreation programs such as youth sports, fitness center, community communications, and community resource officer, which met the DPI's criteria for use of community service fund levies. The activity is open to everyone in the community, and the activity takes place outside the usual K-12 time period. All ayes, motion carried. Resolution to adopt levy. Motion made by Crowell Ellis that a tax be levied to raise $9,864,391 for the operations of district and non-referendum debt and $350,000 for the community service fund. All ayes, motion carried. School board member salaries. Terry Maney reviewed board salaries and recommended keeping them at the same rate as the last two years. Motion by Justin Zeus, Jennifer West, to continue the board member salaries as is. President, clerk, and treasurer at $3,648 annually and vice president and member $3,336 annually and to authorize reimbursement of appropriate expenses of school board members when acting in the performance of their duties. All ayes, motion carried. Board authorization. Motion by Terry Maney, Justin Zeus, to authorize the board to direct and provide funding to prosecute or defend any legal action or proceeding in which the school district is interested. All ayes, motion carried. Set annual meeting and budget hearing date for 2025. Administration recommends the annual meeting be held at 6:00 PM on October 22, 2025. Motion by Klein, Ellis, to set the annual meeting and budget hearing date for October 22, 2025 at 6:00 PM. All ayes, motion carried. Other new business? No other new business. Adjournment. Motion made by Klein, Muleyne, to adjourn the meeting at 6:47 PM. All ayes, motion carried. I apologize. After the set annual meeting, there was other new business. I did read that.
You did. Adjourned it?
I've read that too.
Oh, okay. You're not listening. I was listening. Okay, thank you, Josh. No action on the reading of the minutes. So next we'll move into the treasurer's report.
All right. Treasurer's Report's me. So the treasurer report looks at each of the funds and just gives a general overview of the revenues, expenditures, and the change in the equity for each of those funds. The big one we need to talk about is Fund 10. That is where the majority of our revenues and expenditures occur. That is for all of our just regular daily expenses. You will notice that we ran a $390,000 deficit last year, which is a large number. And there's a few reasons why this occurred. The first is remember that we made about a $70,000 transfer from Fund 21 to Fund, or from Fund, yeah, from Fund 10 to Fund 21. So when we make that transfer, that's technically an expenditure, but it's really just moving from Fund 10 to Fund 21. Then, there's a few other components that go into this deficit. One was a missed revenue payment from one of our municipalities that has since come in. That was about $20,000. So those two there bring us to about $90,000. Then, you'll recall that we had to replace a special ed van that was unexpected. That was about $60,000. Our Fund 50 had some struggles last year, so that resulted in a bigger-than-expected transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 50 to cover that deficit as we're not allowed to carry a negative fund balance in Fund 50. There was less revenue than I had anticipated with our high-cost transportation, so that was a miss on my part. And then, the other things come down to some staffing. I don't want to say issues, but there were some staffing things that required either long-term subs or hiring of people that was not expected. And I don't want to get into detail with those as that's pretty confidential. But what I'm getting at here is these were a lot of one-off things. It's not like we went out and hired four or five new positions that we're gonna be carrying through into the next couple of years. I'm confident in the budget that I'm gonna present tonight that gets us back to pretty much a break-even budget. As again, these were one-off things. And then finally, I'll just remind you that late last summer, we decided to replace our boilers for $170,000. And while I usually try to build in a little cushion into the budget, when we approved that boiler, I pulled out some of that cushion and that obviously came back to bite me a little bit. So that's why we're running that $390,000 deficit. Any questions there?
Are any of the legal fees we've been kind of being as well, is that unexpected or were those budgeted for? I'm sorry.
Which, which legal fees?
From our ongoing?
That. The amount that we paid for that is like $1,500 because our insurance has picked up that entire tab. So, yeah, that has cost us.
It was our deductible?
No, thank you. Yeah, it was our deductible. So, yeah. Okay, so then Fund 21, this is where we have all of our student activity accounts and our scholarships. We ended up $93,000 surplus there. Great news for our scholarships and student activities. Fund 27, this is all of our special education funding. We saw an increase in spending, which, you know, we're gonna see with the increasing salaries and benefits as a majority of that is salary and benefits. Fund 50, again, we struggled a little bit there, but with that transfer, we had zero change in equity, zero fund balance. And then finally, the last thing I want to draw your attention to here is with Fund 80, you'll notice we had a $78,000 surplus there. That is our community service fund that allows us to do our middle school sports and some other F things that I'll touch on later. But, you know, see that we ended with a $285,000 fund balance there? And, yeah, sorry. There are copies up here if people want physical copies. I meant to say that before we started this. But I just want you to hold on to that number and remember that Fund 80 fund balance for when we get into the levy and things like that. Then the second part of the treasurer's report is just our last end-of-the-year cash reconciliation. You've seen that one before in our control live meeting. So that concludes the treasurer's report. We need a motion from the floor to stop that.
Motion to accept treasurer's report as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Brian, second by Carrie. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries.
All right, clerk's report. Clerk's report, again, showing a lot of the same information except now we just get a little bit more detail with our Fund 10 revenues and expenditures. The couple pieces that I'd like to draw your attention to would be those at orange square at the bottom there. That would be our total loss or profit for the year, which was a loss of $218,000. And then, very bottom there in green, our total all-funds balance would be $6,307,608. If there aren't any questions there. And similarly, we'll need a motion to accept that.
A motion to accept the clerk's report as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the clerk's report as presented by Brian, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we move still to you for the budget presentation.
All right. So on page 10, we start with the budget. This is actually where I'm gonna do the majority of my talking. This is some of the assumptions that went into creating the budget and then as well some of the highlights. So this budget is presented in the Department of Public Instruction's budget adoption format, which complies with Wisconsin State Statute 65.90. The district's total levy will be $11,790,611. This is compared to last year's levy of $10,214, and I lost a zero there, $10,214,390, which is a 15% increase year over year. The vast majority of that is coming from our new capital referendum that we passed in April. So you can see as it breaks down, Fund 10, we've got a $9,998,542 levy. Fund 39, we are levying $1,492,069. And then Fund 80 is $300,000. When we take that levy into account, our mill rate is going up to $4.42, which compared to the mill rate of 3.98 from last year. The vast majority of this is because of that referendum. Now, when we were talking in the spring to pass that, we said it would be about a 58-cent impact. It's coming out to be 57. But $3.98 plus 57 isn't $4.22. So the difference here is with those increasing property values, that's driving the mill rate down, so we're losing some of that mill rate, but then the referendum is bringing that back up. But when you look at the actual total amount that we're levying, it's right on what we said it would be, which is great news. The third Friday count was a whopping 531 students enrolled, 493 of those residents, which came out to 482 FTE. We'll get into that a little bit more as well. Equalized property values increased 8.6% over last year's equalized value. All municipalities saw increases greater than 8% aside from Sugar Camp, which saw a 6.1% reduction. Monaco and Three Lakes increased 9.2% and 15.1% respectively. What did I say?
He said 9.
Oh, 19.2% and 15.1% respectively. Again, the district will levy $1,492,069 in Fund 39. That is our first levy of the new referendum. That will be 21 years of that. We did our first borrow in July on that, 21.6, and then we'll borrow the remaining in January. Staff received a 2% increase in compensation for 25-26. The district stayed with a high deductible health plan for 25-26, but included a coinsurance provision, which helped us keep our increase to just 1.5%. Staff are still responsible for the first 500 for a single plan and 1,000 of that deductible, and then the district HRA picks up the rest of that. So while we call it a high deductible plan because it is technically a high deductible plan, when we look at the employees' actual costs there, it's far from a high deductible plan. And the deductibles, for reference, are 3,300 for a single and 6,600 for a family. The employee is still, the employee contribution to that is still 12% for 25-26. The district saw no increase in dental insurance premiums, and that benefit is provided at no cost to the employees. And then, the Wisconsin retirement system, in 2025, that amount was 6.9% of the employee earnings, and then in 2026, it'll be 7.2%. So it's actually going up quite a bit. And then finally, our total district staff, we have 106 total staff, six administrators, 55 certified staff, and 45 support staff. That does not include coaches and stuff like that. And then finally, total enrollment, again, a whopping 531 students. Sugar Camp was at 117, Three Lakes 176, and then the junior high, senior high was 238. On page 11 and 12, those are just some function code references for the budget adoption format, which you'll see starting on page 13.
Caleb, can I ask a quick question? On the Wisconsin retirement system, who sets that, when sets that?
It's set in the summer, and it's by the board. And they just take a look at how the funds are doing and whether or not they have got the money to meet the obligations, and it's kind of a...
TPI board?
No, WRS, ETF.
WRS.
Yep, Employee Trust Funds.
Does anybody else have any say in that? Or that's just what it is?
I don't believe so. Yeah, so I think last year it was 6.9 and then went to 6.95. So that's why I say it's a pretty big increase. It's by far the biggest that I've seen since starting this. And I believe the first time over 7% as well.
Thank you.
All right. So again, 11, 12, just function code references to help you read the budget adoption format. I am not going to touch any of this because it is not in a very good format to actually give us information. So if we could skip ahead to page 20. Fund 10 revenues are on page 20. This just gives you a breakdown of where all of our revenues are coming for Fund 10. And then on page 21, I've got a Fund 27 revenue budget. And unless there's any questions on individual items there, I'll just move on to the full budgets. Okay, page 22 then gets us into Fund 10. And when I presented this in late summer, we had talked a lot of, we had talked about a lot of this already, so I'm not gonna rehash a lot of it. I'm just gonna hit these main points because the budget has stayed pretty similar. There's been a couple staffing, little staffing changes, but nothing significant. So the one thing that I want to draw your attention to here is first the levy for Fund 10, the taxes and other local sources going up. That's just due to our revenue limit increasing, mainly due to the $350 per pupil that was in the state budget. The next thing, and the biggest one, is that inter-district payments. And that is our open enrollment. And you can see that that's going up quite a bit, up to $813,200, which is a lot more money than we've typically been getting. And you'll see that spread on the open enrollment, and it's amazing. It's great. But otherwise, when you take all the revenues and expenditures in, like I said, we're right about break-even. We're at a $5,000 profit. Page 23 gives us a, just a graphic breakdown of the revenue and expenditures. And in that revenue, I like to break it out because, you know, a vast majority of our money comes from our taxpayers. We get very little general aid with our high property values up here. But then, I broke that down further to show our tax base and then the tax from our referendum. So that orange up at the top is what we're getting from our referendum. So you could see how reliant we are on that referendum and how important it is for us to keep passing those. Other than that, with the expenditures, we're a people business. You can see a vast majority of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. Fund 27 on page 24. I had mentioned this when I presented our preliminary budget, but the increase in special ed reimbursement in the biennial budget that was passed this summer is saving us. You can see that that's going up substantially, about $225,000 compared to last year. And that then in turn allows us to lower the amount that we're having to transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27 to cover that. So that's a great benefit to our district. On the purchase services side, I just want to draw your attention, or on the expenditures, I want to draw your attention to the purchase services. You'll see that's going down quite a bit. A majority of that is due to us hiring a staff member and then not having to rely on 1099 contractors and CISA for some. and then not having to rely on ten ninety-nine contractors and CISA for some of our services. And then that would obviously correspond to a great increase in salaries, as you can see up top there. But then otherwise, you'll see that we are breakeven. We always have to breakeven in Fund Twenty-seven. Can't carry a fund balance. So anything that we're, any deficit that we have, then we would just transfer from Fund Ten. Fund Fifty, as I had mentioned, we struggled a little bit with that last year. With this budget and us having substantially more students in the district, I figured we would be able to course correct a little bit there and sell some more lunches. So you'll see in that federal AIDS grants, that's, that's all of our national school lunch reimbursement there. And when we submitted that September claim for this year, we are right back on track. It's even better than I had thought. So one month, so far, so good. Hopefully that trend continues throughout the rest of the year, but we're selling more lunches, and we're doing better that way. Again, with Fund Fifty, we're not allowed to have a negative fund balance there, so anything that, any deficit there would have to be covered by an inter-fund transfer. And that's what you see up there at the top line under revenues, inter-fund transfers. So looking at about a hundred and four thousand dollar deficit there. And then finally, Fund Eighty. I told you to remember that healthy fund balance there that we had in Fund Eighty, because we're going to lower the levy a little bit with, in Fund Eighty. We're going to go from three hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. And the idea there was to help lessen some of that tax impact of the referendum kicking in this year. And we have enough in that account to do what we need to do with it right now. Then finally, the last thing I want to show on the expenditure side would be that non-capital objects increasing greatly. We're going to start sprucing up the fitness center a little bit. And we've done that already with a couple new machines. We got all new dumbbells coming in in the next couple of weeks. We're going to get some new mats in there and really clean that up as well. So we're going to start using some of that Fund Eighty to start sprucing things up in there a little bit. Any questions on any of the fund budgets? All right. Twenty-seven, we talk about our two referendums. So on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, we passed an operating referendum for four point two-five million each year, starting with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and ending in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And as I showed in that Fund Ten budget, that is so critical to our district. Below in that table, you'll kind of see how the district will come out at the end of that cycle. And right now, it's looking at about a six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar loss. Vast majority of that is coming from last year with that, that three hundred and ninety thousand that we lost. When you look at that twenty-seven, twenty-eight being four hundred and fifty thousand about, I, I think we've got some tools in our pockets that we can, we can maybe shore that up a little bit and bring that a little bit back. And then finally, just a little blurb about the capital referendum. We had two questions, one to do school building and facility improvements. The second was for facility improvements to the athletic facilities and sites. Both passed quite easily. And as I said, we did our first borrowing in July, and the rest will be borrowed in January. And the last section here is just some information that I find to be interesting or relevant to the budget. The first is just a longitudinal survey of our levies, equalized values, and equalized tax rates. This just gives you kind of an idea of how our mill rate has trended over, over the years, as well as those equalized values, and then how we relate to the state. And you can see we're always quite below the state average. On the next page, same sort of thing, but now we're looking at our aid membership. And you'll see in there, it says four hundred and ninety students. That four hundred and ninety is an average of last year's January and September student counts. So that's where that four ninety comes.
For FTE.
Yes. But that is not the number that goes into our revenue limit. Of course, we have to use a different one for that. That's a three-year rolling average based on our membership. So that would be four eighty-eight when we look at our revenue limit. So close, but not, not quite the same thing. Open enrollment summary, and this is some good news here. You can see that we're going to be up, well, I'm not going to say we are going to. We're, we're estimated to be up thirty-six students when we look at open enroll in versus out, which last year we were ten up. So that means more money coming in from other districts and a whole lot less going out. Now, the interesting thing is, when you look at that third Friday resident, though, we've got a lot more students, but our residents continue to go down. When you look at that open enrollment out, those open enrollment out, those are our residents. Those count as our residents. So as that goes down, those are residents that we don't have. But we're going to make that up with that open enroll coming in. So what this tells me is the students, the increase in students that we're seeing in is an increase in open enrollment. On page thirty-two, you see a breakdown of our special education in the district. Last year, we serviced ninety students. This year, we've got eighty-two. There are thirty-seven staff in the district that are serving these students in some capacity or another. So I just thought that was interesting. Then in Fund Eighty on page thirty-three, the major uses of that Fund Eighty would be our middle school athletics, our school resource officer, fitness center upgrades. We do a community story hour at Denver Memorial Library that's open to the public that are 4K attends, our public relations communications staff, and then for some of the upkeep of the community ball fields at Don Burnside Park. Last but not least, we have our enrollment and participation in our student lunch program. Even with seeing that increase in students, our number of free and reduced, free is right around that twenty-nine percent, which is where it was last year. So we're hanging right around where we were last year. Our reduced number is about eight point seven percent of our students, and then total free and reduced is two hundred students total, or about forty percent of our student population is free or reduced lunch. And then finally, on page thirty-five, we see the income guidelines for free and reduced, if you're interested in that. And I need to take us back, because I think I skipped a page. Oh, no, I didn't. Okay, we're good. I even talked about it. Okay. So any questions or concerns or...
In talking with other business managers, are we at, so, I mean, are, are districts in the area seeing the exact same issues with lunch, with some other expenditure?
Lunch, definitely. Yeah, I, I think we're in a similar situation with a lot of the other districts around us. We are a bit of an oddity, just being so small and being so reliant on that requirement. At the same time, there's many others in the same boat, so, you know.
Any questions from, for Caleb from the floor?
How much do we pay at Burnside Park?
It's about ten thousand.
Is that basically field rental, or what is that?
We, we signed an agreement with them many years ago that we would use our Fund Eighty to help maintain those ball fields. So we've been honoring that agreement. And yes, that is part of the rental, to use it for baseball and stuff.
And soccer too, is that included in that? Because we practice soccer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In my, my field.
Yep, yep.
So maybe we just need a resolution to adopt the budget.
If ready, the resolution is in board docs.
Also reference back to the notes from last year? You substitute in our...
Yep, with the only change, if someone's ready to make a motion, compared to the language from last year on the resolution to adopt the budget, the change would be, it would not be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It would be three hundred thousand dollars for the community service operations. So we will need a motion from the floor on a resolution to adopt the budget.
Somebody'd like to make that motion, I can put my computer here if they'd like to just read it. Oh, I heard that. Perfect.
I would move to adopt, make a motion to adopt twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six school year district proposed budget as presented, including three hundred thousand for community service operations, including recreation programs such as youth sports, fitness center, community communications, and community resource officer, which meets the DPI's criteria for use of community service fund levies.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion for resolution to adopt the budget by Justin, second by Kiri. Again, the vote is every member in the room who can vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay, next we move into needing a resolution to adopt the tax levy.
That information is on page nineteen.
I'm motion, a motion to accept the tax levy to be raised of nine million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars for the operations of the district, one hundred, one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, sixty-nine dollars for the referendum debt, and three hundred thousand dollars for the community service fund.
Do we have a second on that motion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for a resolution to adopt, adopt the tax levy by Brian, second by Justin. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay, next we move, ah, thank you, Caleb. Next we move to review salaries of board members and authorize reimbursement of actual and necessary expenses of school board members when traveling in the performance of their duties.
Okay, I would propose that we keep the salaries at the same rate this year in reference to realizing that we have a little bit more expected of our taxpaying base with our referendums, and that this will then make that we have, had the same salaries for the last three years out, and we would look at it next year.
Hearing that, this one is not set for action, but we still leave action.
I think we do, we do. Because we're not, we're not changing it, but I think we still need to have it as it remains.
Is someone ready to make a motion regarding school board member salaries as presented?
I'll make a motion to leave school board salaries at current rates as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor by Josh, second by Justin, to maintain the school board salaries as presented by the district administrator. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay, next we move to authorize the board to prosecute or defend any action or proceeding in which the school district is interested. Terry, if you have nothing in addition, we would just need a motion. Heard motion by Justin, second by Terry. For authorizing the board to prosecute or defend any action or proceeding in which the school district is interested. All those in favor of the motion, set forward, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay, next we move to setting the annual meeting date for twenty-twenty-six.
We would like to propose that we will have the meeting scheduled on the same, similar to what we did this past year, with it being held at six P.M. on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Say the date again, sir.
October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Do we have a motion to accept as presented? Second? Second. We have a motion by Kiri, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next we move to other new business. Is there any other new business regarding the school district annual district meeting or budget hearing? If there is none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Do we need a break?